This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our July Board of Selectment meeting here at Memorial Town Hall. I'm Mike Frieda, first selectman here in North Haven, joined, as always, by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I'd like to ask us to stand for our pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Item number three.
Michael?
Yeah.
Public comment to the agenda. Mr. Katz, good to see you here tonight. How are you, and I'm glad you're doing well.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
Yes, well, it's great to see you, Mr. Katz. I have one comment. I would like to make a motion to amend this agenda, which we can do because it's a regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meeting, to add public comment. So I will make a motion to add public comment to the agenda as item 9A.
Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second Sally's motion.
And I will agree with that also. And thank you, Sally, for bringing that up. I know you worked this out with Valerie earlier today. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number four, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectment meeting from June 3rd.
Maybe before we get that on the public comment, we did talk about, thank you for adding that to the agenda. Is it possible that people could call in, or we're not able to do that?
We're not doing that right now, no.
I just wanted to clarify that.
We are back to where we were pre-pandemic. These are open meetings. This is being filmed live, and we're happy to have Mr. Katz here in subsequent meetings. We hope we have more people here. In the slide presentation I'll be making, I'll be announcing that all the meetings are opened up right now to public attendance, with one exception, just for the month of July. That's planning and zoning. And then we'll move forward with that. So that's kind of where we are right now.
Please come to the meetings. We've missed you all. For item four, before I make a motion on item four, I just wanted to wish you and Bill happy new fiscal year. Today's July 1st. I don't think we've ever had a Board of Selectment meeting on July 1st before, so.
That's right.
So happy fiscal year. With that said, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Selectment meeting of June 3rd, 2021.
All right. You have a motion, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to item number five. I'd like to just present a brief overview, and you'll note, according to the screens, this presentation, and just I direct your attention there. I'd like to start out by saying that we're resuming our Music Under the Stars concert series, and that will be on July 6th, so this coming Tuesday will be the first concert of our series. There'll be a seven-concert series. The groups and the bands are posted on our website, and we're hoping to have a very nice crowd on our green on July 6th. As I mentioned, there's a total of seven concerts this year, with the last concert being on August 17th. And I wanted to just make mention just a couple of changes this year, for this year only. For this year only, there will be no food vendors on the green, and there'll be no classic cars. We contacted all the food vendors. We contacted the classic car community. We've explained that as we're moved out of this pandemic, there are going to be certain people that want to attend the concerts, but they're still going to want to be spaced out. So we tried to open up some space where you walk into the green, onto the sidewalk. That area on the left-hand side will be free for people that would like to sit there. And on the east side of the green, up on the hill, there'll be space for people to social distance should they choose. Again, this is only for this year, as we continue to try to balance opening up the town fully, but also recognizing there's still some people who are a little bit uncomfortable. And we think this will provide us, at least this year, a way to open up some more space on the green. So that is what's happening on July 6th. As we just mentioned, effective today, we'll be getting back to in-person meetings of our board and commissions. The one exception will be planning and zoning. There's an application that has been in process, that's been handled through Zoom. It's very complicated, and they will probably conclude that application process in July, and they'll be back to in-person meetings, it looks like, in August at this point. As we've come out of the pandemic, I'm back on the economic development trail. And there's a lot of activity that is happening, and a lot that will continue to happen. This represents just a brief summarization of some of the many projects that I'm involved with. Some we've talked about before, but there's some progress reports. Jersey Mikes, that's coming into Universal Drive on the opposite side of Barnes &amp; Noble. The sign has just gone up, and they're completing the fit-out and the build-out on that far side opposite where the Barnes &amp; Noble is. And that is a business that, believe it or not, ladies and gentlemen, I've had a lot of requests for down through the years by the citizens of North Haven. We're finally able to put that together. Another restaurant model that I've had so many requests for down through the years is Five Guys. They are definitely coming. They will be south of the Guilford Savings Bank on Washington Avenue at the empty property which was once known as the DeLoro Plaza. On Universal Drive, I'm jumping around geographically now. I hope, and this is something that I started pre-pandemic, but we got derailed during the pandemic. I'm very hopeful that in the next 60 days, we will have a major announcement. And that major announcement could include an 80,000-square-foot retailer coming at the site of the former Toys R Us and Babies R Us. So stay tuned. That has become back on track, and I'm spending a lot of time on that to deliver a positive outcome. Now Jimmy John's is going to go next to Five Guys. Jimmy John's is an upscale sub-shop, sort of an upscale DeAngelo's, if you will, because DeAngelo's was located there in past years. So that will go with the Five Guys. And on that site, there will also be a Starbucks with a drive-thru. So the Starbucks north of CVS, which doesn't have a drive-thru, will be relocating over to south of the Guilford Savings Bank with a drive-thru. And then we're looking to fill that spot that Starbucks will vacate. O'Reilly's Auto Store, that's going right next to McDonald's, that building that you see being built. This past week, I was with the executives of Hartford Hospital, and that old sports authority, they've taken 40,000 square feet, and that's continuing to get built out, and they will continue to expand their operations there. In effect, that ends up being a healthcare facility that is a really complimentary healthcare facility to what we've brought forward here in North Haven on the Yale healthcare side on Divine Street and State Street. And by that, I mean they'll be offering a lot of skeletal services as it relates to spine therapy, disc rehabilitation, disc surgery in spines in terms of helping people who have these spinal issues. Scleriosis, or sclerosis, they call it, that is also part of what's happening there, along with some other wonderful services. The Hampton Inn, back on track, next to Chick-fil-A. Foundation will start being poured, hopefully, in the next 60 days. That was a temporary casualty of the pandemic, as you can well imagine. During the pandemic, there weren't many people staying in hotels traveling. Panera Bread, that's back on track. That will go between the Hampton Inn and the Chick-fil-A, and we're just waiting for a date that they're starting, that they'll start to pour the foundation. Now Golf Cove is a brand-new, unique business that's coming to North Haven that'll be here in September. This is a business where I actually have been working with the property owner, who's done a remarkable job at renovating the whole facility, right next to Leutze's Restaurant on State Street. So this business will be coming in. It's a virtual golf facility where people who like to play golf can tee up a golf ball and hit into a screen. And what you'll see is the golf ball traveling into a three-dimensional virtual golf course. So you'll see a ball go out, you're hitting it into the screen, but the screen will project the distance that the drive has accumulated. And it's like playing golf at a golf course, but it's virtual. There'll be some refreshments in there. They've applied for a liquor license, I think beer and wine. There'll be food served there. So that's something new and unique. And back when golf was really in its heyday, pre-pandemic, these types of businesses, people loved going there. When I played golf before taking office, that was a place I would go to, at various areas, whether it be in Massachusetts, where my companies were, or even here in Connecticut. Driving in the off-season in particular, utilizing that as a way to hone your skills and keep your game intact. And the latest announcement is that we're back on track with the North Haven train station. And that was a temporary casualty of our pandemic. So we've got a close relationship with the Department of Transportation here in my office, and I'm very friendly with the key decision-makers at the DOT. So that, ladies and gentlemen, is still a few years away. But that will go at the end of where Jeru's Restaurant is. And it'll go at the base of that road, and it will straddle the train tracks. And what we've done is we have brought Pfizer into the equation. I've had meetings here in my office with Pfizer, the DOT, and a small portion of the Pfizer property will have the train depot. Now, the rest of the site is a site that is continually being marketed. And we're working with Pfizer on that, and the actual RFP went out about a year and a half ago, and there were some interested parties on that. So the goal there is to have an ecologically friendly site. The cleanup is virtually done, but there will be a business component to it in conjunction with the train station that is now moving forward. And for those architects and engineers who may be watching tonight, we're in a 30% design phase on this project. So what that means is that 30% of the project has been designed. It'll go to a 60, an 80, 100% design phase, and the DOT has earmarked monies toward this passenger train system there at the end of where Jeru's Restaurant is. So that, ladies and gentlemen, is a synopsis that doesn't include everything we're working on here, but those are some of the highlights. From a noteworthy standpoint, I'd like to announce that our third selectwoman, Sally Buemi, is part of a North Haven poet laureate committee, along with a couple of other community members. So Sally, I'm going to turn this over to you, and I'd like you to give the public an update.
Sure, thank you, Michael. You might recall, a few months ago, this issue came before the Board of Selectment as a result of a letter from a citizen, Gary George, who presented us with the idea of having a town poet laureate. And we thought it was, we all thought it was a great idea. So yes, a nine-member committee was formed. This is through the library board. And the nine members are three members of the library board, three educators, and three community members. And I am honored to be one of the three community members. And we had our first meeting, so I just thought I'd give you all an update, especially if you are an aspiring poet out there and are interested in applying. The application period actually starts today, July 1st, and runs through September 30th. And you could go to the website that we set up. And that is the website where you could get all of the information and the application in order to apply. You must be a North Haven resident, at least 21 years old, and you could submit your application and supporting documentation, along with three to five poet composition samples. And you could submit your application by email, and the email address is poetlaureate@northhavenlibrary.net. Or you could submit your application materials in person at the library. And you could actually pick up the application materials at the library as well. So I hope there's folks out there that will apply. I think it's going to be a great program. Our target date to select the first inaugural, the first poet laureate for North Haven is going to be announced, we hope, in December.
Very good.
So again, get your applications in by September 30th. Okay? Thank you.
Bill, any comments, or?
I don't remember. I'm not sure we discussed that. How long will the, you know, if you're selected, how long will you be the poet laureate?
For two years.
For two years.
And then you could submit, again, if you want to continue, you could be sort of for another two years, that that's the limit, because we want to get more people involved. And ultimately, as Mr. George had suggested in his original email, ultimately, we're hoping to have a junior poet laureate through the high school or whatnot. But the North Haven poet laureate will probably lead that effort once he or she is selected. So I'm pretty excited about it. I'm looking forward to learning a lot about poetry from the professional educators on the committee. I've done a little poetry writing myself, so I'm really interested in this, and so I'll keep you guys informed.
Well, good. I'm glad you're on the committee. You know, Susan, the library director, tells us we have some really fabulous people in addition to yourself on this committee.
Yes.
It should be a good committee.
Yeah, we had a great first meeting, and I look forward to working with all of them. And it's a very exciting program, and I'm glad we are going forward with it. And I give great credit to Chairman Fletcher, Michael Fletcher of the library board. He's worked hard to get this going, along with Brittany Pearson, who is the North Haven library reference person, who's sort of taken the helm as far as all of the administrative work and getting it going. So they've both worked very hard and got us all together, and we're looking forward to the process in selecting the first poet laureate. So get your poetry samples organized and get them in. Thank you.
And thank you very much, Sally.
Yes.
And lastly, we just, on behalf of Bill and Sally, we want to wish everyone a happy July 4th. We'd ask you to consider, please, celebrating responsibly. And I wanted to make mention of something. Please be mindful of neighbors and pets and those veterans who have PTS. Many times what happens around July 4th is fireworks are shot off in neighborhoods. And we've got, we got a lot of feedback that when fireworks are being shot off, many of the neighbors aren't informed by their own neighbors that these things are happening. The town gets calls and complaints. Pets really have a tough time with the loud noises, particularly dogs. And some of our veterans, believe it or not, the explosions bring back PTS memories. So what happens many times is there's complaints in the neighborhoods. Those complainants call the police department, and the police department is obligated to respond. So we ask you, please, please be very, very careful in what you're doing. Fireworks, illegal fireworks are illegal to shoot off in residential areas. This is the same situation all over the state. Our message here tonight is just be mindful of your neighbors, their pets, and the veterans you may have living near you, some of whom are suffering from PTS. And that's our message tonight, ladies and gentlemen, on that. And thank you. Okay.
I think we're fortunate, too, that we've had a little bit of rain now because things are extremely dry. So that's the other complication in terms of, you know, potential for fire, you know, for starting fires, too, based on, based on how dry it's been for the last several weeks.
Sally, any comments?
Cats are afraid of him, too.
Cats, too, yes.
I have cats, and one of them disappears for, comes back around the 6th. I don't know where he goes in my house, but it's tough for, yeah, they don't understand, you know. But your message is well put, and I hope people will take that into consideration. But there's no question it's going to happen again.
Yeah, it will.
Yeah. But I think it's a good message to make. I have a couple of quick questions about your overview of the economic development. You know, we all know Dino's has moved.
Yes.
Dino's was on Northern Washington Avenue since I was a kid. You know, that's quite a space there. Do you know of any plans there?
At the old Dino's?
The old Dino's.
Yes. So that's something I didn't mention here, but that's another project I'm directly involved with. So that building, it's been determined it has to come down. It has to be torn down.
Really? Wow.
It is not able to be retrofitted. It's old, it's aging, and it's decayed. So what we're looking at, believe it or not, a small grocery store, which has been difficult to attract. There is a couple of restaurants who may be interested in the site, where the property owner would have to build it out, and the restaurants would lease it. So it's not a parcel that will be for sale, because where Dino's sits, ladies and gentlemen, in that Kimberly Plaza, there's one property owner that owns the Dino's building, the parking lot, and the plaza on the east side. So you'll see eventually it'd be torn down, and a new business will be going in there. I'm trying to bring a restaurant there. That's what I'd like to see, on the northern side there on Washington Avenue. But what's also happening, and here in North Haven is a good example, with the growth of Yale healthcare, the Yale healthcare system, with Hartford Hospital coming in now, healthcare services are really in high demand. And we've also had some limited interest with other healthcare facilities that would be interested in that building. But I'm hoping it's going to be a restaurant, because we've brought a lot of healthcare facilities here. We have a lot of great medical services here in town with the Yale healthcare system and now Hartford Hospital. Any other questions on that topic?
Well, yeah, we do, we have a lot of restaurants in town. How much more can we eat? But I guess we do like to go out to eat here.
I sometimes tap into a young lady who's in this conference room right now, who has the pulse of people who like to dine in restaurants. And that's this young lady right here.
Yes.
And she's got this network of people that say, tell Mike to bring in this kind of restaurant, right?
Yes, we still have room for more restaurants.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Not necessarily fast-food restaurants, but more sit-down dining. So, yes.
So that Dino's building is a goner. All that fried, french fry grease, I guess, I don't know. It's a goner.
But, you know, I'm delighted, because we helped Chris, and Chris and I spoke. Chris is the owner of Dino's. And we helped fast-track him over at the plaza that's next to the classic car wash over there. And he's very grateful for our help, and he's doing very well right now with his new model.
Yeah, yeah. I've been there once, and it's a little smaller, but it was very crowded. And, you know, if you're an old-time North Havener like me, there's nothing like Dino's, so I understand.
You know, you just triggered a thought. There's a lot more I could talk about here, ladies and gentlemen, these projects that I'm involved with. But, you know, I had a lot of requests down through the years for new bakeries. We've got two wonderful bakeries now in town we've brought in. Sylvia's Bakery, which is over right where near Dino's is, where Sally's referencing, and also Lyra's, Love Lyra's Bakery. And that's over at the La Lupa's Plaza there. And we were there the other day, and that was a situation where I actually drove the owner, two and a half years ago, around the town, showed her 14 different locations. And it's a marvelous business model, of which young men and women, and young boys and girls who have disabilities are employed as part of the workforce. And it's wonderful to see how that, those types of jobs offer structure and a sense of hope, and a sense of really feeling good about themselves as they make a good impact there. And when I drove around town with that owner, I invited Dot Logan to come with me, who was on the Board of Education, special ed teacher for years, and Dot joined me at the ribbon-cutting.
Yeah, that's great. I'm also very interested in that Golf Cove coming in. I golf three to four times a week, so maybe I could go there, and the virtual process will straighten out my left-to-right fade. I don't know. But that's something that would interest me very much, and this golf is very popular.
You're going to like it.
Yeah, yeah. So that was my main question, was about the Dino's space on Northern, the old Dino's space. Thank you.
So I'm going to turn the rest of this meeting over to Sally.
I'm glad you mentioned the bakeries, because I think it's important that we, that they, you know, when Libby's left and everything, I think there was a, so I'm glad that the two bakeries are there.
Two new bakeries.
We really need, we really need that.
Yes. All right.
Also, yeah, item six, we're going on to. But I'll do the first one, and you and I, Bill, can alternate. I will make a motion to reappoint Reverend Scott Morrow, 34 Bassett Road, to the Cemetery Commission for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2023.
I'll second that reappointment.
All right, motion, second. Any discussion? All right, thank you, Scott, for continuing to serve on this committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Bill?
Reappointment of Todd Ricky, 27 Fallon Drive, to the Cemetery Commission for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2023.
I'll second that reappointment.
All right, motion, second. Thank you, Todd, for agreeing to continue to serve. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Carl V., 30 Allendale Drive, to the Cemetery Commission for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2023.
I'll second Carl's reappointment.
Okay, motion and a second. Carl, thank you for continuing to serve. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll motion to reappoint Alden Mead, 200 Remmon Road, to the Cable TV Advisory Council for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2023.
I'll second.
Motion, second. Alden, as always, thank you for your service. Alden also serves on our police commission, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And finally, I will make a motion for the reappointment of Michael Parisi, 10 Victor Road, to the Cable TV Advisory Council for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2023.
I'll second Michael's reappointment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, Michael, thank you for your service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Item seven, I will, is our bond releases. I will, this is regarding bond P. 18-37, regarding 224 Quinnipiac Avenue. The original amount of the bond was $10,000. The current balance of the bond is $10,000. And I will make a motion to release this bond in its entirety with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next.
Next item is the, item eight is the property tax refunds. I'll make a motion to approve those property tax refunds.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looks like that's it on the agenda tonight. So the next meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be Thursday, August 5th, 7:00 p.m. here. We'll have more updates on the overview. And now, Sally, we are at a point of public comment.
Yes, we are.
Mr. Katz, good to see you, sir. It's like the old days here, Sherman, now.
It is, it really is.
We even brought a podium for you tonight, so.
I miss the crowd.
Well, we've missed you and the crowd, Sherman.
Well, it's over a year since I've been here. I'm a little older, a little more nervous.
You look good at a podium, Sherman. You look good.
Almost a rabbi. Almost a rabbi. The point, the items I want to talk about, the bridge on Sacagawea Road, it reminds me of Skiff Street, where they would put half a dozen workers for a day or two, then they move them somewhere else. They move around the state on other jobs. I know some of the construction companies, what they do is they bid on a job so they can get it, and they start the project, and they go somewhere else. Now, I'm assuming, or I'm hoping, that there is a completion date in the contract with this contractor, because driving through that area is terrible. The ruts in the road, they fix them, and you get more. There's a narrow space. If a truck comes through or a bus comes through, it's hazardous. I see people, they're afraid to drive it because the wall is too close to them. I mean, there are people that are worried about that. So my question is, is there a completion date on this bridge?
Not a precise date, but it could be two to three years more. Now, let me share with you what happened, Sherman. There was a long delay on this bridge, and there wasn't any work done there because there were problems that were found during this reconstruction. And one of the problems was drainage. So we had to have the engineers back involved. Now, keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, 80% of this is funded by the federal government, 10% with the state, 10% on the town. So we have to abide by strict rules and regulations that are dictated by the state and the federal government. And I'm going to take a complicated subject, Sherman, and try to simplify it. They had to redo the drainage and put a pipe underneath the old bridge. They could not drill under the water, so they had to put a pipe. If this was the bridge, the pipe went this way down, and had to reconstruct a new outlet, a cement outlet leading into the Quinnipiac River. That tied this project up for three months. I wasn't happy about it, but there's not much we can do about it because of the traffic and all the things you're talking about. So we're being told two to three years.
Well, I think you know how I feel about some engineers. They look for the most complicated way of doing things. We had it on Shorewood Drive. I won't go into detail, it's not right. They don't listen in advance, and they don't know their jobs. I understand what you're saying. Hopefully, they'll get this completed soon, while I'm still here.
You'll be here, Sherman.
I'm going to bring up a subject that I've talked about many times. Pandemic has really hit it hard. Unemployment's hit it hard. New Connecticut, I think, is still 11% unemployed. Although they say there's a lot of jobs around, they're not filling them for some reason. After gathering information, okay, I'll start again. Procedure for automobile tax payment. After gathering some information, several towns have programs as follows. Payment split into two payments. Payment split into four payments. Now, I heard of a town that even has payments into 12 payments, but I cannot verify that. Every tax program is computerized and should not put a drain on a town clerk's office or their employees. When it is not unusual for a family to have one to four cars with a tax burden of $300 to $600 a car. So if you have two cars in your family, and you have relatively new cars, which many people in town have, you could be facing a $1,000 tax debt, which is sometimes a third of what your house taxes are, or a quarter of what your house taxes are. I don't wish to schedule town employees' time, but it is my opinion the benefit of the taxpayers far outweighs what may be inconvenient to the tax collector's office. Bear in mind, this is, everything is computerized now. Nothing is done by hand. And I think we need to look into this again. That's all I would say about that. As far as public comment, I would hope that people that want to make public comment would take the time to come to the meeting and not do it on Zoom. You know, come up here and stand up here, get the feel of what it's like to be involved in the town government. I've been in it for over 50 years, so somebody has to take over. I asked about the old Donato's over there. It looks like it's ready to fall down. You'll probably have to tear it down at some point.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I can fill you in on that if you like, Sherman. That's going to be a tear down. But here's the reason, though. The reason it hasn't been torn down is they lose, there's a grandfather clause in there. And by tearing the building down through some archaic zoning rig set back in the '50s, they wouldn't be able to put a restaurant there. So it's, you noticed that we just had them mow it, clean it up, but it still doesn't look good.
Yeah.
But that's another project that I'm working on. I hope we can bring this great concept to fruition. But that's the only reason it hasn't been turned down. The structure itself keeps the regulation intact for a restaurant.
Well, my wife and I used to go there frequently, I don't know, 30 years ago, whatever it was. And it was a good restaurant, even when it changed hands for a while. It's nice to see that North Haven is becoming a cultural center. It's great, it really is. Although I don't get to participate, I like seeing it. The old Dino's property, does John Rossini own that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was curious about that. And I think that, did he also buy the Chevy dealer, the old Parke?
No.
It just changed hands.
Yes, it's now Hamden Chevrolet that was not purchased by John Rossini, but it has changed hands, and the Parke family did sell it, yes.
Yeah, that was a quick deal.
Yes.
I had to take my car in for service there.
But, Sherman, you know, you're on track on this because Mr. Rossini did buy another Chevy dealer in Wallingford.
Wallingford, yes.
Not the Hamden.
Yeah, well, we dealt, we had some work with him when he did the apartments on State Street.
Yes.
And I found him to be a very decent man to deal with, and I'm appreciative. I'm happy that I tried to help him. I think that's all I have to say. Nice to be back.
How's Sally doing, Sherman?
My wife is doing well.
Good.
I won't trade her. I've had it too long.
How many years now married?
61, 61 married, and we've been together since 65.
And 54 years in North Haven? You've lived on over there. 54, right?
53.
53.
53, yeah. We love the town. We just, we would never live anywhere else now. As a matter of fact, I have a son who bought a house here, built a house here many, geez, 30 years ago. One of my granddaughters bought a house around the corner from Sally on.
Watson.
Watson Street, yeah. And she loves it, so thank you very much.
Great seeing you, Sherman. Great to see you, sir.
Before I make a motion to adjourn, just something just popped into my head, because it's July 1st, not to bring up a sour subject, but Mr. Katz was talking about taxes. Taxes are due first half of the grand list now. And I just wanted to remind folks that unlike the previous two tax seasons, which was last July and then January, six months ago, we had an extended grace period that the governor allowed us to have because of the pandemic to give people a little extra time. They were struggling financially. So I thought it was worthy to, a good idea to remind folks that this period, there is no additional grace period, that we're back to the one month. And since our next meeting is August 5th, that's just beyond the grace period. I thought it would be prudent to remind folks. They might have thought, oh, this is permanent. No, it's not permanent. That was just a two-time thing. And so watch out for that. I believe the deadline is August 1st or 2nd. It's usually the whole month of July, but if the end of July is on a weekend, it trickles into August. So there is no extended period into October 1st like last year. So I just thought it was a good idea, okay? And with that.
Did you get your bill today?
I didn't look at my mail yet, but I heard they're in there.
Yeah, I got mine, I got my tax bill.
Yes, yes.
So if you didn't get it today, it may arrive.
It's coming. You know it's coming.
Sherman had another question.
Just one word. I just want to speak to all the veterans, especially the veterans in our town. If you've never applied to the Veterans Facility in West Haven, you're doing yourself a disservice. I've been there since 1899, I'm sorry, 1999. I have my outside doctors, and I have my VA doctors. And I have to tell you, you cannot find a better place for medical treatment than the VA in West Haven. So look into joining if you need medical services. It's a great facility for veterans. Thank you.
United States Navy, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Sherman Katz. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. So with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
For a second?
A second, I'm sorry.
All right. Happy Fourth of July again, everyone. Have a safe weekend. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.